On behalf of Brian and Tony, I want to welcome you Jennifer. Today Jennifer Flader is our new Clay County Auditor. This will be her first Commissioners' meeting and Jennifer, I know that you will do a great job so welcome.
Thank you.
I have had the great honor and opportunity to serve as a President of the Clay County Commissioners for the past few years. I feel that we've made some good progress in many different areas for the citizens and taxpayers of this great county. I also believe that we will continue to make good and positive strides in the different areas for which Commissioners have responsibility. I also believe that there's no need for one person to always serve as President of the Commissioners. I think we should rotate who serves as President. I also believe that both Brian Almender and Tony Fenwick would do a great job as President of the Commissioners. Jennifer, I make the motion that Tony Fenwick serve as President of the Commissioners for 2015.
In all segments.
Is that for the members? I'm sorry.
Those in favor of the motion raise your hand. Motion passes three zero. Tony?
And we need a nominated Vice President at this time. Is there any nominations?
Make the motion, Paul Center, the Vice President.
And I'll second that. And we need to take a poll. If everybody in favor say aye. Aye. Okay, I'm gonna have Brian say the pledge and Paul is gonna say it for this morning.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for another year, another month, another day. This is a new year, a new beginning for all of us. And we pray, Lord, that you will be with all the elected officials here in Clay County. We pray, Lord, for our newly elected officials that assumed office on January the first. We pray for Jennifer, we pray for Sam, we pray for Jill, we pray for Bob, we pray for Paul, and our two newly elected Council members, Jackie and Jason. Lord, as we go into this year, let us not forget the reason why we're here, and that is to serve, to be servants of the taxpayers and citizens of this county. If someone thinks that there's a different reason, Lord convict them, for Lord, the only reason we're here is to serve the people. And Lord, I pray for wisdom, strength, and knowledge for Brian, for Tony, myself, and for Eric and Jennifer, that we will do what is best and right this year for the people of this county. I pray for the leadership in the state, the leadership in Washington DC. Lord, be if our President can help him as he makes the decisions. Lord, we cannot forget our military who's stationed around the world, some of those tough and hot places, Lord. We pray that you will put thy protecting arm around them and bring them home once again to family and friends. We thank you, Lord, for the good health that you've given us. We pray, Lord, that you will give us prosperity. We pray, Lord, that you will lead us and help us in everything that we do. Lord, we commit this meeting to thy hands, pray thy will, not ours be done, in thy name. Amen.
I'll get the first thing on the agenda this morning, approve of the minutes. Is there any discussion or concerns on the minutes? We had two meetings this last morning.
I'm gonna come in with the gentleman.
That I have a motion?
I'll make the motion when we approve the minutes from last month.
I second the motion.
Okay, well, everybody have votes for it. Raise your hand. Okay, county business morning is the county appointments. We got a list of appointments to be made this morning for the property tax assessment board and appeals. There's five members, the Commissioners appointed three of them, one Democrat and two Republicans. The county council appoints two members. And we will start out with, we have talked to these people and have all agreed to do this again this year. Jim Hicks is a Republican, Barbara Scott is a Republican, and Carol Wong is a Democrat. Is there any discussion on this gentleman or?
I'm in.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll agree on it.
And I'll second that. And we need a vote on it. Everybody in court of justice, right here. Brazil Clinic Commission. We have Eric Wyndham, we have talked to, he has been on the floor for four years now, and he is going to do another four years. Any discussion on this?
I make the motion that we approve Eric Wyndham for a four-year term for the years 2015 through 2018 for the Brazil City Clinic Commission.
I'll second that.
Hold on, raise your hand. Anybody in favor, anybody in polls? Okay, Clay County Trains Board. We have two candidates for this, Jack News and Logan Wagner. They will both do a three-year term on this. Any discussion? I'll make a motion to approve Jack and Logan.
I'll second that.
Everybody please raise your hand. Any disapproval? County Board of Health. We have two candidates, actually we have two candidates up this year. It's a four-four year term for 15 and 18. Rick Rogers, Penny Grover, Darrell Gruber. Any discussion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. Dispatcher, upon the recommendation of Paul Harden, we need to consider Karen Zink for approval as a new Chief Deputy. This is an appointment we made and it's no date on how long it lasts until we decide to change it or the sheriff has meant to change or ask for a change. Any discussion on that?
Tony, I might read what it says here. And when this was last approved, June of 2010, the job description for the Chief Dispatcher, E-911 Coordinator, I might give this information so everybody understands what we're doing. In the event that the Chief Dispatcher, E-911 Coordinator position should become vacant, the Sheriff of Clay County will interview candidates and will make a written recommendation to the Clay County Commissioners for their approval. If the candidate selected by the sheriff is not approved by the Commissioners, the sheriff will submit another name for the Commissioners' consideration and approval. This process will continue until a candidate has been approved by the Commissioners. And our Sheriff, Paul Harden, has made a written recommendation to us as Tony indicated, and so I think that everything's been fulfilled here and we are ready to proceed. Mr. President, I'll make the motion that we approve Karen Zink as a Chief Dispatcher, E-911 Coordinator, effective January 1st, 2015. And as you indicated, this is for an indefinite period of time. This person is not reappointed each year, but she will serve until she resigns or is removed.
I'll second that. All in favor, raise your hand. Next on the agenda is a pending for vacate, vacate? Oh, I'm sorry, Brian Williams next on the agenda.
The reason I came here this morning, one of the speakers this morning was just basically to ask the Commissioners if there would be any interest along with our Sheriff in maybe looking into the fact of the possibility of centralized dispatch here in Clay County in combination with the city. As everyone knows now, we're running two dispatches opposite the county, 911 dispatch along with the city. And what I'd like to see, a couple things, if you'd be interested in looking into the possibility of that, and if we would go that route, how we would go about doing it, I don't have all the answers for that. My suggestion is if in fact that we want to look into that as a county and city coordination, that we could maybe get together and appoint, if nothing else, an exploratory committee to see if it's something that would be of value to the county and the city along with our citizens of the county and the city. With me today is Chief McQueen along with Captain Archer, and Chief does, if you'd like to see him now or later, have some figures on the amount of calls that we take in the city and things of that nature. But it's just something that we thought, I've had it in back of my mind for quite some time, that I feel like we should at the very least visit the idea of it. I think it would take a lot more information for the county and the city and our Sheriff in order to achieve something like this. And that was really my request here this morning, was to see if the interest level is here in order to pursue the program, and how you would like to go about looking into that possibility if you do.
I'd like to see the information if you have it. We'd like probably have a discussion all down the road, and this is something probably very interesting to do, and we'd like to look at it.
Well, we've got, like I said, we've got information for you. Chief McQueen has the information on calls, records, and things like that.
Yeah, I think anytime we can work with the city to make anything better, I think it's a good deal for us.
And like I said, one thing we could, like I said, if you will, if you'd like to form some kind of a exploratory committee, this is, yeah, I would like to do that team that has any value to it.
Mayor, give me a little more information here. What type of calls are you talking about now? Nine, if somebody calls 911 for the ambulance, that goes to dispatch over in the Sheriff's Department, right? That does not go to you?
Me currently.
Yes?
Yes.
The large majority, yes. Large majority. Sometimes they'll come in direct.
We actually handle your calls now, then we contact, if they come, most of them come to us, then we contact you. So we're handling the calls already. Part of the calls.
911.
911.
Okay, so what?
You take that call and then it's transferred to us at that point?
Yes.
So you take the call, but then it's transferred?
Okay, now what type of call?
911 call.
But you don't get the call on for ambulance, do you?
Direct.
The ambulance itself.
That goes through the 911.
That goes through 911 over the Sheriff's Department, so that's not what you're talking about here. You're referring to John Doe in the city of Brazil? Has a domestic problem, and so they called presently the police department at?
Exactly.
Okay, and this is what you're talking about, is running all that through?
All radio communication to one central phone.
You would handle your administrative calls yourself, is that correct? Someone calls for the police department, and you guys have a service.
Someone calls every week.
Yes.
Like I said, everyone talks to the chief. Yeah, they've got, they would set that up on some kind of voicemail system where they could just use the transfer.
So all other calls would come through the one central dispatch unit, right? That's what you're talking about?
Yes.
Basically, you can be eliminated, your dispatcher, the city, all of the, everything come out, Sheriff's Department.
Yeah, we would like to get Paul Harden's input on this, his 911, and we would like probably put the committee together.
I'd like to see that too, and if there's a committee, my request is that as part of that committee, that myself and even our Chief would be part of that committee, just back, all we can try and work on this together, if we could answer questions that we have about funding, things of that nature.
On the, I'll share those later, but on the information I gave you guys, so you're aware about, front, this last year, and it's really only year I've practiced very thoroughly with the calls from service that we receive on a daily basis.
Yeah, I think we've got some pretty accurate numbers.
Very accurate.
That's it.
So again, now Mayor and Chief, basically every call that you have listed here, would go through the one central dispatch center if we went to that, right?
Yes, yeah, that's what I'm looking for on that.
And then what? Brian was talking about any personal phone calls for you, would you have a different number to talk to you?
An emergency number.
An emergency number to be called.
To call directly.
So we wouldn't have to take your administration number?
No. What's a BMD call?
So fire department, so, yeah, some of it, oh, there's a police, I guess, I tried to put it out to the side, what it actually was. Signals or devices, code for use, that's just a special control. I tracked this, I told the Mayor last year that I was gonna give you like a detailed month to month, so our board of work speaks, he knows what the operations of the police Department are occurring on it every other week, or at least a monthly basis, that he knows what kind of calls we're taking on a monthly basis, so.
Yeah, every month we get a report, Chief Generation Report on every call, and we're all capitalized, I'd say, I think we've got some pretty good numbers to work with as far as that, should be, should be very accurate.
Yeah, I'm sure you guys need?
So that's basically my request this morning, if it's something that we're entertaining and maybe we can look at, and looks to be a benefit of how we look at it. I'd like to just open up a dialogue to show this.
Yeah, I think for you to talk to me three months ago about this, and ask me to direct to me, say, we have suggested you come and listen.
I most certainly would not be opposed to forming an exploratory committee, and I would suggest that we link this committee up the next month, after we have given some thought to who we would want on this. I would suggest a relatively small committee, so that everyone will be able to meet as needed, but I think if we can come up with something that will benefit the city as well as the county and the help to us, why not? I think we'll consider.
I'll agree with you 100 percent. I think it's something we just need to look at, we're trying to put something together, and it needs to be explored, and I think it could be a benefit to both the county and the city.
Well, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you for coming in, Mayor.
This is interesting. I didn't realize you had this broken down into so many different chapters.
Yeah, I tried to be more detailed for my board of work, Mayor, as I could.
That's very interesting.
I get, like I said, I give that on a monthly basis, I just finished the calls Friday, so I want to give you guys an accurate, accurate poll, what kind of calls the city does.
Excellent, excellent.
All right, Paul, take a look at it. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion that we form an exploratory committee, members to be appointed by the President of the Commissioners at the February meeting to explore the possibilities of combining this and seeing what is best and right way to approach this.
I guess we need a second to make the poll. I'll second this. And let's hear it, vote, everybody in favor, raise your hand. By a poll, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now Jim, I guess you're next. I jumped ahead of everybody, but you're next on the agenda here. And you're going, that's the street closing in Metz and Alley, is that correct?
Hello?
I'm at Marks.
It's a little confusing here because?
Suburban place.
Yeah, I'm on that. On the plat, the town was platted as Middlebury, but we call it Marks, so it makes it a little confusing. I think you should have a plaque.
Yes, I have one there.
Yes. I have included in there a copy of the original plat of Middlebury, and it's even a little more confusing, because what I'm talking about is a block seven and eight. There, there's a north and south street that goes between those blocks. On the plat, it says it's Water Street, but we don't actually have a street there. We have a Water Street in Marks, which on this plat is the one that says Cold Street on the far east. So somehow we've started calling Cold Street Water Street. So when I say I want to close Water Street, I'm not wanting to close this street that's being used as Water Street. I'm wanting to close this one that's not actively used. The street goes, I want to close that part between Mulberry and Market, and then the alley that runs east and west through those same two blocks, but Main Street on this is 59. So from 59 over to what we call Water Street now, that's our plat of Water Street. I brought you a copy of a map that can be used, so you can see what it looks like for the area, and if they're not used, so.
I think the highlighted ones, ones that go down, is that correct?
Are you?
Is it highlighted ones?
Yeah, the highlighted part is what we want closed, so.
Do all parties that connect to this in favor of it, or?
A lot, yes.
All the parties, all the parties that connect to this are in favor?
Yeah, let's go on to, Mrs. Myers, I think have all agreed to do all this. There are no utilities in any of these, where we're at, the utilities seem to be out the streets that exist, out the, out the door that exist. So this, Mr. Wallman recently acquired some property north of the alley, he knows south of the alley, and this would help him consolidate all of his property, and same on the other side of Myers. My property could all be consolidated in one piece, so I haven't gone through the middle of it, because it divides the street. So, Mr. Wall, if you want to ask anything, something too?
I'm the type of person that I have to go see something, to see what it looks like and so on, and so, this is in my district, and so I did go down and meet with Terry at his residence, and he took me out and showed me the alleys and the areas that are being proposed here. And from what I have seen, I would strongly recommend that we approve this. In fact, I think Terry is doing some people a big favor here, because as I looked at that, as he pointed this out, and as I see it on the map today, there's fences across this area, there's a building, in fact, I think there's a house that's partially built on this area, that's to the west near 59. So, you know, I don't want to, if we wouldn't approve this, and somebody didn't want to really come back, I'm not sure what the legal ramifications of building a house on something that is not theirs to begin with would happen to be. So I think in reality, Terry and Don, Don Swergen is one of the heirs, one of the adjacent owners, I really think this is a positive thing, so I definitely would be in favor of this.
I should pack it along with Donald for Marks.
Well, gentlemen, I will make the motion that we approve the closing of the alleys as presented to us with the written documentation. The two alleys that's listed here, I'll make the motion that we approve the request as presented.
I've got an ordinance. We're going 2015, we need to suspend the rules from the initial first reading unless you want to approve it next year either way. Since Brad, on December 18th, 2014, a petition presented to Indiana Code, Section 367312 to vacate a part of the street, an alley located in the town of Marks, formerly known as Middlebury, in Harrison Township, Clay County, Indiana, was duly filed with the Secretary of the Board of Commissioners of the County of Clay. And whereas the petition was set for hearing on Monday, January 5, 2015, at 9:00 AM before the Board of Commissioners of the County of Clay, after notice by publication was given as required by law in Indiana Code, Chapter 5-3-1. And whereas this petition was found to be in deformed intent and that the closing and vacating of the street and alley would in no way be adverse to the best interest of Clay County, Indiana, or to any other person, the Board of Commissioners of the County of Clay now finds that the petition should be granted. Now therefore being ordained by the Board of Commissioners of the County of Clay as follows. Section 1, vacating of street and alley, following the strike, undue street and alley located in the town of Marks, formerly known as Middlebury, in Harrison Township, Clay County, Indiana. All that part of a 33 feet north and south street, as the saying in the butts block seven and eight in the original plat of Middlebury dated March 10, 1836, and recorded in Flat Book 1, Page 82. Also, all that part of an east and west alley, as the saying runs, through block seven and eight in the original plat of Middlebury dated March 10, 1836, and recorded in Flat Book 1, Page 82. Section 2, repeal of conflicting ordinances, all ordinances or any parts thereof previously enacted which are in conflict with provisions and disordinances are hereby repealed. Section 3, effective ordinance, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and publication, if any, as required by law. Section 4, recommendation of ordinance, the Secretary of the Board of Commissioners of the County of Clay shall furnish a copy of this ordinance to the Clay County Recorder for recording, and to the Clay County Auditor for transfer, in fact, signature on it as well of Commissioners.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules, and I'll make a motion that we approve the new ordinance.
One time.
Oh, sorry.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules. Second.
I vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carrie's?
I'll make a motion that we approve the ordinance.
I'll second that. All in favor, raise your hand. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you so much, I have to have a sign that we'll record next door.
Sign, sure. Or is anyone calling?
Jim, you're recording this exactly.
Yes.
And make sure you're on background.
Copy of that, that document.
Jim, appreciate you being here, as well as Terry and Don, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is our new elected official, Sheriff Paul Harden. Thank you, Paul. Thank you for coming, and thank you for being our sheriff.
You had asked earlier about information on the buses for the custodian signs. That, is that what you're wanting?
Yeah, this is on the vice.
We didn't know if you had any time to get any more, just on the vice.
Got a little bit of information, I'm waiting to hear from Bumgarner, my Jeff Banner, he's trying to get a hold of the federal prison system to see about a contract for maintenance on the buses. And Josh, why don't you see if you can call him and see if he's got that information yet. The two buses are 2004 and 2002, they are 40 passenger buses. The one bus, 2004, has 196,800 miles. The 2002 bus has 192,193 miles. Like I said, both under 40 passenger buses. Sorry, Brian, but they both got 60 series Detroit engines in them. Sorry, Brian, but they both got sixty series Detroit engines in them. Uh, with V five hundred outlets and transmissions. That part probably makes more sense to use than the rest of us, but.
Sixty series need moved.
It's, it's the better move.
It is, yeah, it's not.
Okay. Both buses are in very good shape. Fed said they said that we probably, that we would have no problems with them. Both buses were very well taken care of. And their comment is the engines really aren't broken in until they reach about five hundred thousand miles. So we're, we're in pretty good shape with the buses. Another, another issue that we've seen come up with these and, and, uh, like I said, we're, we're hoping that the, uh, vehicle maintenance side, we can get a contract with them to continue to maintain the bus, and that's what my hope is.
And number two?
Federal prison. And, but that's what we're checking on right now. One other thing that these can be used for in case of an emergency, because they are basically a contained unit. Forty prisoners onboard. Whenever, uh, whenever we transport prisoners, there'll be at least two guards, one to the front, one in the back in, in a locked pod. The interior is completely sealed. There is a bathroom onboard for extended trips. But in case of an emergency, prisoners could actually be taken out of the facility and placed on these buses and held there. Uh, say in case of a fire or something similar to this. So, you know, it could be used that way in case of emergencies. You know, whenever we're looking at, uh, you know, the hundred and twenty prisoners that we have custodied at this time, you know, if you have an emergency come up, we have to be concerned about what we do with them. So these are some things that.
Paul, do you know if there'd be some type of emergency, real emergency, die, disaster would come up in Clay County? Is this something that Brian Nesbitt might call you and, and get permission to use a bus, or is that out of the picture because it's?
It was pretty much out of the picture on that because they are designed for the, the federal prisoner, uh, transport. Yes.
Can I say something? Also, we are getting these buses free.
Right, there is no cost on the bus.
They're free. And if there would be trouble, if one is going to be more worth fixed, we wouldn't have to fix it. We don't do anything with it. We could actually turn it back to them. But they do it very well. They do a lot of maintenance on. As much as this cat bus is terrible at the bus center, they maintain them, they bring them in so often, they keep a record of the maintenance on them. They do a very good job. These are probably very good cat buses.
Right.
There's no guarantees in mind.
Why would they want to get rid of these buses?
They, they rotate their buses through. That's just, you know, the way they do things, what they have agreed to do, because normally they, they remove the uh, cage system out of them whenever they get them through. Uh, they're leaving the cages in for us. So, you know, they are going to be set up almost exactly the way that the federal prison uses.
And the reason we're doing this for is because we're transporting federal.
Because we transport the federal prisoners, the ICE prisoners for them, so.
Yes, it's very expensive to have this set up for the prison. They do a lot, they do all fifty over at the prison, at the bus center. They do a lot of money on these buses to make them where they can, all the way to make sense.
Right.
Paul, will we have to, since we go to Lake Louisville, don't we go to Louisville, Kentucky, pick up some of these prisoners, and go to Chicago, Illinois, and take them to, you know? Do we have to have permits, fuel permits to cross state lines, or are we exempt from that being governed?
I'm not sure on that. I have to check on that. My guess is that we would be exempt.
That's kind of wise thinking, but I'm not sure.
Actually, since you're transporting federal inmates.
I will check on that, but my guess is that we would be exempt.
And if it's not cost where they remove the bus, you still won't have the vans at Louisville. If you got fifteen, you won't maybe not take the bus, you may take the van.
Correct.
This is something that's been given to us. The maintenance on is probably the most expensive part. We talk about insurance. And we have nothing in them, do we have to put full coverage insurance on? Can it just be liability insurance on the?
Yeah, you would have to.
Yeah, but it was rather lower the price of the insurance that.
Correct.
If we would total this thing out, would the Fed, then give us another bus to replace it?
There's a chance that they would, yes.
Instead of repairing it?
I'm sure we probably wouldn't. They probably would. I, I haven't checked on that side of it, Paul, though.
That would definitely be.
They lose the insurance cost, right?
Yes, they got rotating all the time too. And I'm sure they would, if we're, uh, transporting their inmates, they would just have them on one of these buses or in a secure van. As I said, they probably would. Things can change at any time.
Right.
There's no guarantees in any of this, but, yeah, I'm, uh, I don't see where we can go wrong with this.
I never thought about this life of liability.
Yeah, I think there's a good steak liability. I was thinking about that the other day. I thought, you know, there's no sense of. On these vans, we have nothing on them.
And, and probably drop handle on them, a little twelve hundred a year per bus?
Yeah, we, we don't want to ask for their. It would, it would, it would serve, yes.
Yeah.
Because they're probably a hundred fifty thousand dollar bus if you have.
Yeah, the value of the bus.
I don't know what to. Um, anything else?
Paul, why don't you check on the permits needed and find out more about the maintenance, if we can contract with them and, uh, and then get back to us and, uh, and if this is something that we need to act on immediately, then we can call a special commissioners meeting to take care of this.
Is this something we even have to hold on?
I think so. I would think so.
Since it's been given to us, I do.
I think we have to vote to accept it, yes, from a legal standpoint. Since, since we don't have county expenses out of this, I think we could, I think we could, yes.
If they, if the federal prison system is not wanting to go into contract with us, you want to know where we can.
I just think we need to locate a lender that can do this. I mean, you're going to have some maintenance on.
Oh, yeah.
You got maintenance on the other vans too, so.
We make this on any vehicles, so.
The, the real deal will mean there's, this is a two-way disorder. If something happens at the prison, we can use this as an emergency evacuation to put inmates in.
Yes.
And that's, you never know when something's going to happen in a jail or a prison or anywhere else that. And I think it's very important to have a plan if something happens, if there's a lightning strike, if there's a, you know, tornado. We have to have a place to put these. I've been in that situation before, and I've seen them move these inmates, and it makes it very nice to have a bus around them too.
Do you know yet, uh, if we have several people qualified with proper license to drive this bus, or will they need to, I'll give them a license?
We, we do currently actually have employees that are, have another problem with this for that. Uh, they're actually retired federal prison employees, uh, that actually participate in the transportation's prior to coming here and working.
And if you can't get a contract with federal prison, I would think that would probably be the way to go, yes.
Yeah, absolutely. It's going to be a little.
Be close.
Right, right.
They're going to charge us something to do it to. It's nothing cheap on this.
Right.
The real cost is not having to buy a bus.
And if it is our bus then, then it's our responsibility.
And if it was longer, we don't have to replace that motor. We might go to the point to get another bus then.
Right.
When you do, one will be a backup bus, I guess. I would, you would not probably be using a bus at the same time, I don't know.
You know, unless, unless we're having to run both directions to pick up a large number of inmates at one time, that might work that way. But, uh, you know, probably just be using one, I'm guessing.
And the reason I understand we're going this way is because we're getting ready to increase the amount that makes for happening, is that correct?
They would like for us to, and we are looking at that, yes.
And this is going to increase the money coming back into the county?
It should, yes.
So actually there will be a, do they pay us for using them? They will pay us more for using the bus, or do we know that?
They pay us mileage.
You know, so much per mile?
So much per mile.
It doesn't matter for using the bus, or the?
But in, in terms of actual inmate as well, but I think one of the other benefits we're going to have is our bus, our vans we currently have on with fifteen. So if we have more than that, we have to run multiple buses. Not only are you running multiple employees, you're running multiple buses, putting more mileage on them, more fuel. So when you can limit that down and have forty inmates on one bus, you actually say we're going to cut some costs in our expenditures on what we've been operating currently.
And these vans aren't cheap either, no.
No, they're not cheap. But I also look at liability too. You know, if we cut down the number of vehicles on the road, we've cut down a big amount of liability from some extent. And safety.
I'd say if you get all your information and come back, then we'll make a decision.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Next on the agenda is Walt Moore. He's a highway rider one.
Oh, thank you, gentlemen. We have a small problem that I think you guys should be aware of. And I don't know if you can do anything about it or not, but here to make it rid of that shit we can't find it. Charles and Pamela Lachanet bought a house a couple of years ago in our neighborhood. And when they first moved in, the first thing they did was they claimed that the bridge on the south edge of their property and the creek twenty feet of it was their property. Well, it was not. We tried to explain to them where the line was. Brian Witten wound up spending twenty-five hundred dollars to have the property surveyed to show them that that was not their property and that it was a public right of way. And then I noticed with recent events have come forward, and I got a copy of it. This is a survey that they had done last year by Vincent Vogel. It's recorded in the book. And on a carport that they built, they have exceeded their property line into the county highway. And I'd like to have that corrected. I'd like to have the county right of way properly marked. So when I walk down there, I'm not walking on their property. I've lived out there for fifteen years. It's a beautiful walk from my house down across the creek and back up. It's just perfect for the elevation and everything. Now there's no trespassing signs all over the place. I don't know exactly where their property line is. I certainly don't want to trespass on their property. But I'd like to have the county mark their property line so I know where I can walk through this right of way.
Where do you live in relation to this ground? Where do you live in relation to this ground?
In relation to this out on two houses to the east. It's a nice, safe area to walk because there's absolutely no traffic. I don't have to worry about that. Like I said, for fifteen years, I walked there. But now I don't go worry about property. They, they claim everything. I'd just like to have it clearly defined so I know.
What did the survey indicate that the mayor had done?
What?
What did the survey indicate that the mayor had done?
He had him survey the southern edge of their property to show them that the bridge was on the county, the city right of way. And had an attorney wrote a letter to him telling him that the bridge was not theirs. And they had a sign on the bridge, "Close private property, keep off." And they had to take that off and open the bridge up.
And this is a survey that they have down there for sales.
They had this one done themselves.
I got this from their.
Right. It's recorded and the numbers are.
Now, well, this easement, it goes out to fifty-nine, right? That'd be straight shot out to fifty-nine, fifty-nine, be sitting right here.
What?
Okay, this, this is the road coming in, but it's stopped.
Comes out this way.
It is right here. Here's fifty-nine.
Yep.
And it'd be straight here, right?
The asphalt stops about right there.
Stops right here.
Now, where's fifty-nine right?
Okay, look at that, all right. Fifty-nine's going to be up here, and this would be a straight shot in.
This is coming real come right here.
There's the asphalt.
Where's the county stop right there? Their property is coming up. Actually, I'm at the county road. It's actually the county road there, is that correct?
I've had some dealings, I've had some dealings with this representing, uh, Miss Shagans. And referred it to another attorney who's involved, but this is definitely a civil matter, really nothing for the county to be involved with. I've suggested that they vacate this roadway because it just goes down to a dead end and there's no need, uh, for that road to exist any further, and they can light it up, but, uh, you know, as far as any violations or anything of that nature, I don't see any for any county involved with this.
Then if the county has no legal obligation in this, then what does Walt Moore have to do to get this rectified?
Well, he's talking about some no trespassing signs and things like that. That's a civil matter. That's nothing to deal with.
So legally right now, he can walk down through there?
Yes.
How do I know where their property is and the right of way is?
Well, that's, you know, that.
That's what I'm asking the county to show me.
The right of way is typically would sixteen and a half feet from the center.